January twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, regular city council meeting is called to order. Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
For everyone who may stand, but as Pastor Willie Cooper is going to give his prayer.
Let us look to the Lord for prayer. We thank you, Heavenly Father, we glorify you, and we magnify you, we exalt you this evening. We thank you above all for your son, our Lord and our Savior, Jesus Christ. We thank you for this another opportunity to come into the Inkster Council Meeting. We ask that you would bless our mayor, the Honorable Mayor Byron Nolan, and Pro Tim Williams, and all the council, and all the citizens of Inkster. For we realize, Heavenly Father, we can do nothing without you. We pray, Heavenly Father, that you would bless us collectively and individually. For we need you every hour on the hour and in between, and these and all other blessings we're claiming victories, in Jesus' name, over sickness, death, and diseases, and disease, in Jesus' name, amen and thank God.
Amen.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Wiley.
Present.
Councilman Oden has an excused absence, Councilwoman Mitchell has an excused absence, Councilwoman Howard has an excused absence, Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Here.
And Councilwoman Chesum.
Present.
We have four present tonight, and we have a horn.
As you all know, Councilwoman Howard obviously works, and she usually has Mondays off for council meeting. This month we'll meet on Tuesday because MLK Day, so she's not here. Everybody keep, Councilwoman Mitchell has come down sick over the weekend, bronchitis, so she's trying to recuperate. And everybody think about Councilman Oden and send out a prayer to him, he had surgery this morning. Nothing crazy, everything went well, I talked to him this afternoon, but he's going to be down for a few days, but he'll be back. So just keep them in your thoughts. Everybody had a chance to look at their agenda? Your motion? Well, we had some changes. We took off item B. We did that in orientation.
It's going to be okay.
Yeah, right, right. We've got to shut the whole meeting down. Everybody's sick. We got presentation A and presentation B is going to be Raymond Robson, auditors.
Okay.
Everything else still on?
Make your bucking to accept the agenda with the new changes.
Been properly moved in second discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Okay, presentation, we have our first presentation, Alpha Kappa Alpha, Iota, Iota Omega Chapter, and Zeta Phi Beta, Zeta New Zeta Chapter, come on up.
To the Honorable Mayor Byron Nolan, members of the Inkster City Council, and the citizens in the city of Inkster, good evening.
Good evening.
I am Danielle Williams, President of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, Ata Iota Omega Chapter of Inkster, Michigan.
And I am Nicole Pennington, the President of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta New Zeta Chapter of Inkster, Michigan.
And we also have with us our housings and facilities chairman, Carlotta Mitchell of Alpha Kappa Alpha, Sonya Randolph, Zeta Phi Beta, and members of our respective organizations. We stand before you today as separate organizations with a collective purpose, securing a home for our organizations to continue to serve the city of Inkster. Specifically, the former Twenty-second District Police Station and Courthouse, located at twenty-seven three zero one, South Rooker Park, which we have affectionately called The Giving House.
Being established on historically black college campuses over a hundred years ago by women less than five years removed from slavery, both of our sororities have a significant place in African-American history. Our founders saw the need to expand the African-Americans' knowledge of education, social and physical advancement, and left a legacy of service. Over the past century, we have continued this legacy, both individually and collectively, through our service efforts in the arts, community action, social justice, education, physical, mental health, and social stability, economic stability, just to name a few. Our most successful collaboration effort was our Super Saturdays, you all may remember those. They were spearheaded by Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority during the time the Inkster Public Schools was in receivership of the State Board of Education. By dedicating our time and talent, we were successful in helping the school district meet the No Child Left Behind adequately yearly progress measure. We currently adopt the school, the Inkster Preparatory Academy. As occupants of this property of The Giving House, our organization would use this facility as meeting and office spaces, allowing us to continue our global and local programs of service throughout Inkster and Western Wayne County. The local programs that we would sponsor through grant funds would list the city of Inkster as a partner. This space would also allow us leverage our already established partnerships to bring more resources to the community during this Inkster Renaissance. In closing, several articles have been found, including one written by SmartCitiesDive.com, regarding urban development and revitalization of cities, indicating that community outreach and involvement is key to shaping a city and its longevity. Additionally, the article supports that significant numbers of redevelopment projects across the country include a form of community outreach plans. This location in the city's heart would make it visible to visitors leaving the airport or passing through that this is just not another building that is owned and inoperable, but on and giving life to this city that we both love.
At this time, we would like to walk you through a short presentation to highlight the international programs of service for both sororities, as well as our presence here in the city of Inkster. So again, this is a picture of the actual location that we are asking to receive. And again, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated was founded in nineteen oh eight on the campus of Howard University, and the Ata Iota Omega Chapter was chartered here in the city of Inkster in nineteen sixty.
The Zeta Phi Beta Sorority was founded January sixteenth, nineteen twenty, at Howard University as well. The Zeta New Zeta Chapter was chartered in Inkster on January third, nineteen sixty-four.
And as you can see, both organizations will be preparing to celebrate sixty years of distinguished service to the Inkster community. So for our sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha, we have our twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-two international programs of service, titled Exemplifying Excellence Through Sustainable Service, where all of our thousand chapters across the country are asked to implement the following targets. First, we have HBCU Call for Life, a call to action, where we financially support and promote historically black colleges and universities. One of the ways in which we do that is through our signature program, Colleges Missions Process for High School Students. Under target two, we have Women's Healthcare and Wellness, where we focus on the following areas: Breast Cancer Awareness and Prevention, Heart Health, Nutrition and Wellness, and Care for the Caregivers. Next, we have target three, Building Your Economic Legacy, and those subcomponents include Personal Financial Planning and Asset Accumulation, Credit Repair and Monitoring, Entrepreneurship, and the Black Dollar Three Sixty-five. Under target four, the Arts, we pay homage to the Harlem Renaissance and the Black Arts Movement. And finally, we have target five, Global Impact, which includes the National Global Impact Day, Global Assistance Activities, Refugees in America Assistance Program. So here are some of the ways we've implemented some of those programs in the city of Inkster. Last year, we had our nineteen oh eight Playground Mobilization Day in collaboration with several community partners, where we painted, performed landscaping, and cleaned up the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. We also, just yesterday, honored the legacy of Dr. King by giving back to Operation Refuge's Mother's Pantry, where we organized the facility, donated two hundred and fifty dollars, which provides five hundred meals, and also helped prepare for the upcoming Camp Inspire program. So many meaningful activities on yesterday. We also had a Pink Carpet Day, where we welcomed the two hundred students at Daly Elementary School back to school in September by providing them with backpacks and school supplies and healthy snacks. Over the summer, we sponsored the All About You Young Onward and Upward Program, where we transported over a hundred youth from the Inkster community to Wayne County Community College to teach them about ancestry and genealogy. Those are just a few of the things that we've done in the city of Inkster just in this past year alone.
With Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, we have also some of our signature programs. It's, one is called Z-Hope, which is Zetas Helping Other People Excel. We put on workshops. We have upcoming, our organize, Get Organized, How to Do Time Management. We also have an elder care initiative, where we adopt a nursing home, which we have here in the city of Inkster. Storks Nest, which provides items for pregnant women and services. Our Storks Nest is housed in Saint Clement's Church here in Inkster as well. Zeta Prematurity Awareness Program. Adopt a School, again, which we have adopted, the Inkster Preparatory Academy. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day. We also, when it comes to the elder abuse, we do classes on what we can do to help our elders and prepare them for the next phase. So we make sure that they have classes on writing a will and things of that nature. The International Women of Color, as well as the triple negative, triple negative breast cancer. Just within the last year, we, again, we've adopted the Inkster Preparatory Academy. We created an entire library for them, as well as we give out gift cards for families that are not able to purchase meals during Thanksgiving and Christmas. We adopt families from that school as well. Many of you may have seen us doing our Adopt a Highway, it's right here on Michigan Avenue. It starts at John Daly, and we go two miles down, we're out there three to four times every year. Our annual college fair, which is normally held at the Booker Dozier, or either at the Simmons Center. And our Zeta Prematurity Awareness Program, which we held at the Spring Hill Missionary Baptist Church, also here in Inkster as well.
So these are a few of the things that both organizations have done individually. So now I'd like to share a few of the things that we have done together. We've already mentioned the Super Saturdays program. We also participate in the Inkster Memorial Day Parade every year. Also, the Inkster Easter Egg Hunt activity, in partnership with the Inkster Task Force and other organizations throughout Inkster, and the annual holiday, Halloween Party that's hosted in the city of Inkster. So those are a few of the activities where we come together to provide service to the city of Inkster. So to implement our programs of service, here are some of our international partners: AARP, American Cancer Society, American Heart Association, American Medical Association, American Red Cross, Equal Facts, Lions Club International, March of Dimes, Storks Nest, Souls for Souls, Susan G. Coleman, and UNCF. And we are proud to have the American Heart Association join us as we implement our Pink Goes Red for Heart Health Awareness Event that we will have at Starfish Family Services next Friday on February first, to promote heart health awareness through Zumba activities, and also we'll be bringing the Saint John Providence Mobile Heart Mobile to the community to provide free health screenings, including EKGs, blood pressure screenings, and also your overall heart assessment.
Before we say thank you for the opportunity, which we are so grateful, I'd just like to tell you a little bit about how long we've been servicing this community. We say since nineteen sixty-four, that's when we were chartered. But we've been, at least what I am aware, we've been housed in the Floyd V Simmons Center for the last twenty years. I don't know if any of you have been to that facility lately. It has not been very well upkept. The lights are out. The rooms are cold. We can't control the heat. The bathrooms are horrible. I walked in the bathroom here today, and I said, if we could just get a bathroom that looks like this. You know, so these are the things, and these are the reasons why we are coming to you, and we're pleading, give us an opportunity to be able to continue to service this community. We want to be here, but we're the last, the Zetas are the last organization that's still left in that building. Everyone else has left. We want to remain here in the community, we've just got to find a way home.
And similar to Nicole, Alpha Kappa Alpha met at the Floyd V Simmons Center for several years, but we finally had to leave due to the squall conditions. As of now, we're in Lumbow as well. We've met at Wayne County Community College, we've met at Schoolcraft College, which are both outside the city of Inkster. And those locations are no guarantee, I could get a call any day saying you can no longer meet here. And then where will we have to go to plan our programs of service, where will we go to host our community events? So I would love to bring the Ata Iota Omega Chapter back into the city of Inkster to conduct our business and plan our programs of service to serve the citizens of Inkster. So I hope that this presentation today is just a first step in opening the door to more of what's to come, asking that you would please consider us as you work towards your redevelopment efforts in the city of Inkster. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Ladies, I would like to get together with you both, we should meet soon, so we can discuss what inventory, what we have, what we actually own, that may be able to accommodate you. So just set it up, you can call the clerk, you can call my office, let's get together soon. Okay, everybody, we have a second presentation. It's about our audit that we just had done, the two thousand, June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen audit. You ready to go? How you doing? New person this year.
Mark is still the partner on the job, but he has scheduling conflicts, so. My name's Ken Melvin, I'm the manager on the job, so I supervise onsite field work and would be happy to answer any questions you have. Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for having me. Everyone has one of these, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to direct your attention to page one. This is kind of the accumulation of all of our work for the audit, this is the audit opinion. The city itself had a clean, unmodified opinion, that's the best you can do. One thing I would like to note on page two, the Inkster Housing Commission is a component unit of the city. We don't audit this entity, others do. They have to be included in the city's audit report as a discreetly presented component unit. And they had a disclaimer of opinion in their audit report this year. Frankly, kind of a strange item to have in the audit report, and as a result, we had to list that here. So recommendation might be to reach out to the Housing Commission and get some detail, some issue with their capital assets that the, their auditors had. If they continue to have this qualification, this disclaimer of opinion, it'll continue to show up in the city's audit report, which is not ideal. Directing you to page twenty.
Why is that? Why is this a bad thing for us? When we are not directly responsible to them or for them?
The determination of, you're affiliated with them enough that makes them a component unit, so they're part of the city's reporting entity, that the employees don't work here.
That's strange.
It is.
So there's specific guidelines under the accounting regulations in terms of who we have to include in our annual reports. You have, as you mentioned, they're a discreet reporting unit.
Yes.
Which is, it's a accounting, technical term, but essentially, there's enough of a relationship between the city and the Housing Commission, the Housing Department, that while we are not one hundred percent and directly responsible for them, we do have to include them in our financial reports. Probably, I think primarily because of the way that the members are appointed, I think is one of the.
That's probably the biggest factor.
For the, you know, the fact that they're determined to be a discreet reporting unit. So it's basically, we're close enough that we have to report some of their information. We're required to include that in our audit, but we're not directly responsible, so that's why you don't see them included in our, in all of our detailed financial information.
Well, I, just as a sidebar note, if I don't have any authority, the responsibility seems like it should not be mine either.
But there is some authority in terms of the appointments. I think that's the rationale for there, for there being some, under the accounting rules, why there viewed to be some connection there, because by virtue of the fact that you appoint the commissioners, that is viewed as the city and the council having some authority.
We have some. It's interesting, because most cities appoint the commissioners, but I wonder if all the cities are seeing. They separated from the city years and years and years ago. So is, all cities are in the same situation where they have to put them on their audit? Because almost all mayors and councils appoint. So is that enough? I mean, that's not much.
There, without having the audit work papers in front of me, that is one of the criteria, is appointment. Some entities will have, they're separate, but the city will provide ninety percent of their budget through contributions. That's a financial, that entity would essentially be bankrupt or out of business without the city. That's another example. I don't have the specifics in front of me regarding the Housing Commission. Certainly can make those available to Mr. Carrington. But it's, there is enough of a relationship under the accounting rules to make them part of this. It's worth noting that the language in the opinion is pulling that out of your information and kind of listing it separately. We do note that there's still a clean opinion on everything that the city proper has, all their major funds, governmental activities, so on and so forth. So something to follow up on, I think, it was a surprise to see it in there. So their auditors would have more information on that. Any further questions on that?
Is there any remedy?
The remedy would be with this entity and their auditors, like I said. If their auditors don't get comfortable with, you know, they mentioned capital assets that the Housing Commission couldn't provide sufficient evidence that they own certain assets. If that's not fixed next year, capital assets tend to, you own this building, it rolls from year to year. And if they, they don't provide sufficient evidence, this will continue.
Well, the issue is with us, we own the building, and they've been using the building for many, many years, but it was never transferred properly. So the request is in front of us now for us to transform that property. So if that's the issue, now I understand.
Yeah, he's paying appointments, he is, but that's something we do.
Plus this, we actually own the buildings that they're operating in, they're operating in right now.
Okay, and I think they own some other properties too, with their HUD housing and some of these things. So I think that might be the crux of the issue, their audit report is available. So I, definitely something to reach out on.
One of the commissioners is here. Can you shed some light on the situation?
Yeah, I just want to inform him, there's another entity, when you talk about capital, the capital funds that they have, that's money that accumulated down through the years through HUD. Okay, not only, you know, it's money that they, they're supposed to be using various things like that, but I'm just wondering, because this came up once before, Mr. Mayor, about the city auditing the public housing. Okay, now, public housing just come through with the audit, they have a copy. Okay, and I think it's just a matter of getting together, because you need to see how they function.
And we do, we have the audit report, and that's where we pulled this from.
Okay, because that capital, the capital fund that you're talking about, that's strictly in my, through HUD.
Yep, so the.
And we suppose, and we got, and somehow we got to use it.
So if there's accumulated cash, if you will, that you can spend, that's not the issue in question, this would be assets that were already purchased. So buildings and fixed assets, not cash.
I understand, but they have.
You're a wild stallion, and you ain't never rode a horse.
Capital value is what you're talking about, am I correct? The capital value of all the property that they own.
Potentially, we don't have a detail of what assets this is. We just pulled this information out of their audit, out of the Housing Commission Audit Report.
They should be able to give you that.
Okay.
It's broke down.
Anybody have any questions on the audit?
Moving on, I just want to highlight, page twenty is the General Fund Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Changes in Fund Balance, essentially an income statement. For the general fund, you'll see in the first column, spent a little bit more than what was taken as revenue, seventy-eight thousand nine sixty-four was a decrease in fund balance. Ending fund balance is still three point seven million dollars, so that's good. Going to page twenty-three, this shows the budget to actual for the general fund, showing a ninety-one thousand dollar budget variance in the positive for the general fund. Also good to see that. Page fifty-six, I want to highlight another issue we had in the opinion that I didn't mention there is new accounting standards this year require the city's other post-employment benefit liability to be recorded on the books. There's a restatement, some additional notes here, this is nothing the city could avoid, it's just the accounting rules. So there was a small misstatement, I think, cumulative about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That didn't hit the general fund, that's a government-wide entry, so nothing too crazy with that. Going back to page ninety-eight, this is where we list the comments that we had. We had some, I think we had five of them here. I'll highlight a couple of them. Two thousand and eight, number four, on page one oh one, pension and other post-employment census data. This is information on the employees of the district that's sent to the actuaries, that's where we get these liability numbers from. They do a lot of calculation and assumptions based on that. And some of the data that the city has is, there could be retirees from years ago, active employees that have been here for a while, and some of the data, it sounds like was offsite, and there was some turnover. So we just, we noted that having that information being complete and making sure that the actuaries are getting what they need to make sure that liability is correct. Any question on the financial statements or the audit report itself?
Any questions?
The next item I have is the Communication with Governance. Letter here, it says, the Independent Auditor's Communication with Close Charge with Governance. There's a lot in here, basically it boils down to whether we had any disagreements with management or any issues, we noted nothing like that, the audit went smoothly. Page A one of this document has four comments regarding internal control and just some areas to strengthen that. Not findings necessarily, but some recommendations to help the city strengthen their controls. And finally, page B one lists the upcoming accounting standards. Like I mentioned, the OPEB standard had an effect on the city's books. Uh, the only one I want to note on here on page B one is, is, uh, GASB eighty-four fiduciary activities. This will change how agency funds are recorded in the city. The, the major impact here being that things that were formerly in the agency fund may have to be budgeted in a special revenue or a general fund category. That could cause some, some issues, you know, at year-end budgeting, uh, something that's a couple of years out still, but something to start thinking about. So, um, we're happy to walk through the, the city on that when it, when the time comes. That is all I have.
We get it, okay?
All right, well, thank you for coming. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you for having us.
All right, we'll move on down to the consent agenda. Y'all sluggish tonight. Have a motion. Everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Any corrections, admissions on the minutes? Can't find them. There'd be no corrections there. We get a motion? Motion to approve?
Support.
Probably moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes. Slide on down. Boards and commissions. Any nominations? Anybody want to vote on this? Nomination?
I, I got a suggestion about the-
Okay.
I have a suggestion about the cable commission. Um, some of my colleagues don't realize that I've resigned from the cable commission. I've been on the cable commission longer than I've been on, on council.
Oh, wow.
So, so I resigned, hoping that someone else would take that spot. But I was talking to someone there about the cable commission and seeing that it's been, when FCC deregulated and cable companies seem to do what they want to do these, these days, I think we should go from a cable commission to maybe a, uh, cable administrator. But that's what all other committees start doing, because, uh, there's not much for the cable commission to do as a cable commission, because we don't have any teeth since they, uh, changed all the rules. So, uh, maybe it's best we look at having a cable administrator instead of having the cable commission.
Something we can definitely discuss. We'll check and, uh, make sure we can, can we do that. That is a city, uh, commission. It's, it's not a state commission.
No, it's not a state, it's a city commission.
City, okay.
Basically what they're doing now is they're doing programming, working with the kids in the high school, and going through the community and, and, uh, doing programming, videotaping football games, basketball games, and other programs like that. And we can, we're doing something similar to that now. We just need more manpower.
Right, okay. All right, well, definitely, let's discuss that. Any other nominations for boards and commissions? We'll move on down to new business.
Consideration and approval for administration to accept the quote from Co-Puff Mechanical to update the control for HBAC system at the recreation center.
So move, support. Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Consideration and approval to extend the medical marijuana business license application moratorium for, uh, seven months?
I'm motioning that we amend that to one full year.
Okay.
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Consider a denial of a special land use for a used car dealership located at two nine eight nine nine Michigan Ave in the B three general business district. Per the recommendation of the planning commission, Kasam Farhat is the applicant.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion that we, um, accept the planning commission.
Recommendation?
Yes.
We have a second?
Support.
Been properly moved and su- supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Item D, consideration and approval of the two thousand and nineteen application and income guidelines for the hardship exemption with the board of review.
So move?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase one vacant residential lot at five one one Magnolia, located on the east side of Magnolia between Michigan Ave and Cherry Hill, as duly noted, in the amount of five hundred dollars to Carlton Shrofffire.
Sharpshire.
Sharpshire. Thank you.
So move?
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes.
Consider approval of an offer to purchase three vacant residential lots, two of which are located on the west side of Harrison Ave between Carlisle and Pine, as legally noted, and one property located on the east side of Harriet between Annapolis and Pine, as legally noted, in the amount of one thousand two seventy-five to David Davenport, Dappermont.
There was a correction to the, to where that, one of the properties are located. Pine and Andover, okay.
The Harriet, the Harriet property.
Harriet property, okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion that we accept with the, uh, corrections.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
Consideration and approval to accept a body-worn camera grant from the Department of Justice in the amount of ninety-seven thousand five hundred.
Move?
Support.
Been properly moved and supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Public participation?
Going to do Mary McLendon.
Oh, Mary McLendon. Y'all about to get me in trouble, huh? She told me, too.
All right, good evening, Mayor. I won't hold you responsible for that today. And counsel to the fine citizens of Inkster. Happy New Year. It's a great year. We're looking for great things in this new year, and especially in District Number Twelve. And I hope you're looking for major improvements as well this year. Uh, I bring you greetings. I'm Mary McLendon from the Office of Wayne County Commissioner, Glenn Anderson. And I want to remind you that the coffee hour hours have begun, and they're the second Monday of every month as they were before. And in Inkster, they begin at twelve o'clock. And of course, this is at the, uh, the Wayne County, uh, Western Wayne County Health Center. And of course, you're not just limited to go to the ones in Inkster. You can go to, uh, uh, Westland, which begins at nine o'clock at, at the big boys, and then at ten thirty at the Maplewood Center in Garden City, if that meets your needs a little better. Uh, I just want to, uh, remind each and every one of you, while we are waiting for this governmental shutdown to, to end, uh, if there's individuals in the city of Inkster that are part of the governmental force, uh, at the federal level, if they need, uh, some type of, uh, uh, reprise with the Wayne County Treasurer's Office, if their home is in, uh, delinquent status, be sure to contact the treasurer, because, uh, there's some, um, negotiation that can take place there, that they will help you uh, with that delinquency at this time. So, but you have to talk to them, get in touch with them, and make sure that you get the proper arrangements. Uh, pass that information along. We, we know that there's a lot of TSAs that live in Inkster and in the surrounding area, so be sure to pass that information along. Uh, also, the Wayne County, um, Health Center has what they call the Healthy Communities Program. And that program is to offer, uh, pregnancy screening, pediatrics to children, and dental services, uh, for those individuals within Wayne County. Many of those services are free. So if you can pay, they will take that, they will take that. If you can't pay, they will serve you as well. So don't forget that, because we want to make sure. A lot of times, folks don't have dental. They don't have dental, uh, coverage. And so that's a good plus. You can go there and have your, uh, dental screening. The Wayne County Health Department is, in this area, is at three three zero three zero Van Born Road. And you can call if you need any questions, you have any questions, seven three four, seven two seven, seven one zero one. And that's on Van Born in the city of Wayne. If you're closer to the Hamtramck area, that phone number's three one three eight seven one nineteen twenty-six. And then that's at nine zero two one Joseph Campo. So that's just information that I have at this time. It's always a pleasure to be here. I want to commend the sororities for a job well done that they're, they're doing in the city of, of Inkster. I think that's great, and we certainly want to see them continue. And I'm sure you do as well. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Diagea. From State Representative Jewel Jones' office.
Greetings, Mayor, Council, and City of Inkster. For all of you that don't know, my name is Diagea Ruffin. I am the Director of Constituent Services in State Representative Jewel Jones's office. First, I want to convey the rep's greetings to you all. He wishes you well and hopes for, um, great, greatness for you all this, uh, upcoming, uh, term, and also, um, his continued support for the community. First, I would like to talk to you all about his swearing-in ceremony that will be held from seven to nine Friday, uh, February eighth. So we hope to see you all there. At the Inkster Rec. So that's where we'll be at. From seven to nine. Uh, next month, our office is supporting, uh, participating in an important event in Garden City, and we all encourage you to come. The Garden City event will be called Show Me The Money Day from ten AM to three PM, February twenty-third, at the Maplewood Community Center. This is a free event that will provide valuable financial information on homeownership, foreclosure, debt management, banking, student financial aid, healthcare, and current job openings among the other community services. I would also like to point out that the Western Wayne Family Health Center will be one of the twenty-five-plus organizations presenting their services at the Garden City event. So we hope that you all take advantage of this important event. The Garden City Maplewood Center is still looking for vendors or services providers interested in participating in this event. So if you all want to get involved, please contact me at unitedforjeweljones@gmail.com. That's united F O R jeweljones@gmail.com. As some of you may know, the House of Representatives just had its first meeting, so, two weeks ago, so there hasn't been any significant bills available yet. He will also continue to serve as a member of the important Regulatory Reform Committee, and he was just, uh, elected to be serving the Minority Vice Chair of the Military Veterans and Homeland Security Committee in the House of Representatives. So that is a great plus for us all. Finally, during the House, uh, Reform Committees session, we can, we will continue to fight for working families by lowering auto insurance costs, fixing Michigan roads, and removing dangerous chemicals from Michigan's water, reducing the cost of prescription drugs, keeping good-paying jobs in Michigan, and making educational opportunities available to the entire community. Um, I appreciate the time that you all have given me. If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Questions?
From seven to nine. On the eighth. You're welcome.
All right, thank you. All right, public participation. Levo, Officer Levo. I assume this was you, even though you didn't put your name on it.
Good evening, everybody. So, um, just quick announcement, tomorrow, tomorrow, uh, from twelve thirty to one thirty. It's dependent on the time, so try and get there around twelve thirty. We're going to have a fraud seminar. In response to all of this fraud that's going around, we are going into tax season. Tax fraud is a very big deal, as well as a way to combat some of these phone calls that everyone's getting, and unfortunately, people fall victim to. So if you come to the Booker Dozer Center tomorrow, um, from twelve thirty to one thirty, you will get some information presented by me on, um, how to not become a victim of fraud, some resources you can get if you do by chance fall, um, victim to fraud, and really just general information. We'll have a couple of organizations there, as well as some important information to give you. So just, I hope you will attend. Uh, last but not least, the roads are getting very, very icy. Please, 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 please be careful. Like, give yourself like three car lengths between cars, because I hit the stop sign coming here and slid right through it. So, and I stopped way early. So just be very, very careful going home. Don't want to respond to anybody's accidents. Thank you all.
Thank you. Reverend George Williams.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, counsel, to the public. I'm, I'm before you, uh, just to thank this ma- thank the mayor and the council and, and the public who came out and supported the Dr. Martha Luther King program. I was overwhelmed because of the simple fact is, you really put your love into action. You know, with the snow hit like it was, and, and it made up my determination to step up and show your love towards our organization. I just want to come and personally thank you. And I, and I would hope that that type of love would be displayed throughout this whole, uh, this year coming up, twenty nineteen. That type of love can be shown throughout this community. I want to personally stop and thank the mayor, Pro Tem, Councilman Chizzle, and all the rest of the councilmen, uh, Odom, who, who, and the, and the treasurer, and, and the attorney, and all the people that came out and tried to show this support. I just want to say thank you. Okay, and then to the public, thank you.
Thank you. John Goche.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council, and fine people of the city of Inkster. First off, I want to say, it just brings back a lot of memories when I, uh, come out this way. I grew up this way, and I was partners with Don Barton, one of your favorite sons here, and, uh, he backed a couple of, uh, projects I had, and, uh, he, uh, was somebody I dearly looked up to and admired to this day, and think quite often of his wise words. Today, I'm here on behalf of my real estate company. I'm holding an educational seminar, February sixth, about the MISHDA Step Forward Down Payment Assistance Program. It's the best program I have ever seen in real estate to help people get homeownership. The state, the MISHDA program will give a loan of fifteen thousand dollars to help you buy a house. It's for first-time home buyers. So you couldn't have owned a home in the fir-, in the, in the last three years. You must have a credit score of six forty or higher. And, uh, you can't have over ten thousand dollars in the bank. Uh, the program, uh, will help pay for your down payment, your closing costs, and if there's money left over, it'll go towards the principal of the house. And the money's forgiven twenty percent every year for five years till it's completely gone, as long as the homeowner owns this house. It's for sixty-one communities that have been identified in Michigan to participate in this program. Inkster is one of them. Romulus is another one here, uh, Wayne, and Garden City. There's also a program in a few other communities, uh, such as, uh, Redford Township in Southfield. But it's, it's very important for people to know that there's a first-come, first-served basis. There's about eight million dollars left in the program. It originally started with twenty million. It was so popular, it got depleted. By December, they decided to add another five million to it. So there's about eight million left, and, uh, I would be honored if anybody, the churches, or any of the organizations here would like for me to come down and do personal presentations for your membership, I can, uh, definitely do that. But, uh, anyone is free to give me a call on my cell, seven three four six three seven fourteen thirty. I'd be glad to help you and put you in touch with an approved MISHDA lender, as well as give you any information. And the event is February sixth at six thirty PM with complimentary, uh, pizza and some appetizers. And then the presentation will start at seven. I'll have a lender there, myself. We'll answer any questions people have, and, uh, we'll be glad to help everybody out. And there's about eight million left in the program at fifteen thousand, uh, alone. It, it goes fairly quick, so I would, you know, urge somebody to get involved. It's a, really a great program. And I want to leave you with some words of wisdom Don Barton gave me. One day, I was in his office. Uh, I had the Jason office to him, and, uh, Jesse Jackson and Dr. J were in there, and next day Kennedy came in, and I'm like, holy smokes, and I go, you know everybody, don't you? And he said, John, it doesn't matter who you know. It's who pick up the phone when you call. Thank you.
Did he say where it's gonna be?
Oh, I didn't get, I apologize. Location's gonna be in, in downtown Wayne at, uh, US twelve, uh, Bar and Grill in the meeting room. It's at six thirty. Uh, start with some appetizers, and the meeting will begin right after. Thank you again. The address- Thank you again. The address is three-four-eight-two-four Michigan Avenue, Wayne, four-eight-one-eight-four. And I apologize, I almost missed the most important part. Sure. It's seven-three-four-six-three-seven-fourteen-thirty, but I'm gonna give you my card. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Lucius Allen White.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, City Council, all the city officials. How y'all doing? My name is Lucius Allen White. I just moved back to Inkster. I was raised here, Inkster. Just got back after five years. It's good to be here. I am a sports entertainer slash promoter. My wrestling, I own a professional wrestling company. We travel. And last year at the Booker T. Dozer, we hosted a wrestling event. We had karate, boxing, and wrestling on the same card. It was supported by City Council and the mayor. I was the first person since nineteen ninety-three to bring wrestling here at Inkster. And we plan to bring it back again. We booked another show on March twenty-third at the Booker Dozer at seven PM. Tickets is ten dollars. So we just want, we're just trying to bring as many people as we can, our missions to bring families and people together and put smiles on people's faces. It's sports entertainment. I got flyers right here for City Council and whoever wants to.
Can you give us the date again?
It is March twenty-third at the Booker Dozer. Tickets is ten dollars. Anybody want to contact me? I'm on social media. I'm on Facebook. And my number is seven-three-four-four-six-nine-sixty-three-ninety-two. And tickets, ten dollars. You can cash out. We'll email it or mail you the tickets. Or you can get the tickets at the door. Or you see Mr. Al Ba- Backy, too. We also, Mr. Backy told us about another event that's gonna be this summer on the fifth, sixth, and seventh. And I'm gonna talk to my guys, and we're gonna perform there, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody, y'all gotta check out the picture he has on this flyer. It's priceless. DeNard Shaw.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of City Council and to our department heads and residents of the City of Inkster. I just have a couple of quick questions. Just one, just wanted to know, do we still have the fifteen percent? Because I know we did the audit on today. Do we still have the fifteen percent policy that was in place before the past previous council?
You mean the fund balance policy?
The fifteen percent savings.
I think you're probably referring to the fund balance policy in terms of the reserve.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
So that's still in place? That's good because that is very vital to us keeping our dollars here in the City of Inkster. And also, number two, the relationship with Wayne County Sheriff. Do we still have that relationship? Because with the previous council, we had a relationship with Wayne County Sheriff that patrol some of the streets that we have. So is there any type of relationship? I know when I left council, we had a.
We don't have a contract with Wayne County, but obviously Inkster is part of the jurisdiction being in Wayne County. Yeah, we have a good relationship.
I find stopping people today.
Yeah, oh yeah. They're here, for sure.
Okay, because we did have a serious relationship, not in a contract form, but I just want to know if we still reaching out to them to be able to patrol our city streets to kind of free up Inkster officers on the street that's patrolling.
Yeah, I meet with the sheriff Napoleon on a regular basis.
Okay, good, good. That's all I have. And happy New Year to you, to you all. Thank you.
Happy New Year. Pastor Jean Overman. She left? Oh, okay. She leave anybody with her announcement? Okay. You gonna get her? Oh, okay.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Yeah, she's, she wanted to announce that on February the first at six o'clock, there's going to be a Valentine's banquet at the Sheraton Detroit Metro Hotel. Eight thousand Merriman Road and Romulus, and the tickets are fifty dollars. And it's sponsored by Christ Temple Missionaries.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and can I just give Tim his two right now?
Yeah, go ahead. He can pay for my two, too. All right. Will Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
My name is Will Miller. I am still blessed to be the president of the Inkster Western Wayne National Action Network chapter. I had a couple of questions. Actually, I got one question. The, I saw that you guys got a chance to look at your audit today. Does the council still have like a standing committee, like a finance committee, that they get a chance to take a look at the stuff before it comes to council? So y'all can get a closer look at it in case y'all have any questions? Or is it the first time y'all see the thing? It's like here to go over it?
No, no. We get, we get our packets Wednesday before at the latest. So we give them about five days before the meeting.
Okay, so, okay, so no committee sees it before. So y'all get the packet as council, go over it individually, and then.
You mean the audit or you mean just the regular agenda package?
No, just the, oh, no, the audit in this particular.
Oh, the audit, audit. The audit comes to the treasurer and then everybody on council.
Yes, so the audit, audit was circulated electronically right before the holiday.
New Year's?
Uh, Christmas.
No, no, Christmas.
Right before Christmas. And then we passed out hard copies right after the New Year. So they've been in possession of the council members for a couple of weeks now. And then we scheduled the presentation for tonight.
Okay. I appreciate that. I was just hoping to make sure reps get a chance to see it enough time. Other than that, I'm real glad that gentleman spoke about the Step Forward program. That thing is amazing. That is truly one of the best real estate opportunities for communities like ours and others. One of the best uses of the hardest-hit funds that came out of the federal government is that Step Forward program. So I'm glad to hear that somebody's gonna be helping out with that. Last but not least, we had, everybody knows Crystal Linton. A lot of folks who are already well-connected with her know that her brother was having a fight. Had some health issues. He's our longtime Sergeant of Arms for our organization. He wound up, he wound up passing this morning. Since I've been here, he's truly one of the best people I've ever met since I was living here. One of the most affable, coolest people with a strong handshake that I wouldn't expect in the first time I got a chance to meet him. I just want to make sure that everybody get a chance to reach out to their family, you know? They having a lot of joys and pains at the same time. So just want to make sure y'all keep her in your prayers. Thank y'all so much for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for announcing that, too. Madam Clerk.
No announcements tonight, Mayor.
Mr. Treasurer.
Just wanted to remind residents that obviously yesterday was the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. Even though that was a federal holiday, garbage collection is still gonna be on the regularly scheduled days, correct?
Yeah. They came yesterday. Councilwoman Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Inkster.
Good evening.
Anyway, we just want to announce that we have completed the calendars for the month-long Black History event. They are over there. We have quite a few events planned for that month. There'll be something happening every month. And I see we're already butting heads with Christ Temple because our kickoff for Black History Month will be Friday the first at six o'clock at the rec center. We're going to have a gala event there. We're gonna have the dancers. And we're just gonna communicate with each other and start the month off right. On the back of every flyer over there is a calendar that will give you a list, dates, times, and locations of everything that's going on. Now, I have quite a few ladies here who have volunteered to be, to help with everything. So there'll be someone you recognize at every event, so they can help you out with that type of thing. We also have several events that are going to require that you register for them. So we need to know how many people are there. Like our scavenger hunt, our fashion show, the museum tour, because we have to figure out if there's enough people to man a bus. And if they're not, then that one's scratched. But anyway, then there's the talent show, and there's Black History Jeopardy. These will be at the front desk, and there'll be some at the rec center. So you can fill out and let us know what event you will be participating in. And this is going to be a great event if we all participate. If we all take time and enjoy what's going on. And like I said, there's something every day of the month. And we'll also be showing the film Many Rivers To Cross. It's a six-part documentary series by Henry Louis Gates. And we have six different churches who have volunteered to show each part. So that would be on the calendar, too. So we hope you will join us at every event, and we hope you definitely will join us at the gala event starting on the first. And I think that's it.
Okay, Councilman Chizzle.
I don't have anything.
Wait a minute, you don't want to tell people about the humanitarian of the year award you won at the National Christians in Action?
I would like to publicly thank National Christians in Action and the entire organization for the award, which I received on Saturday night, Martin Luther King Day celebration. It was an honor and a privilege. I'm very humbled by that. I thank everyone who did make it out in that weather, because when that storm hit, of course, I was up on telephone poles and whatnot. So I understand your pain with having to travel and everything, so I greatly appreciate that.
Give us one of the things you did humanitarian-wise. No, that's okay.
Mayor Protem.
Okay, first I'd like to give a thanks to the Director of Parking Recs and Jerome. On Saturday, we was hosting, the thirty congressional district was hosting a precinct delegate forum. And it snowed very bad, so our director came out there, and opened up the building by itself, set it up, and I'm gonna say thanks for, you know, for coming out there in all that snow. And Jerome had his guys come out there and cleared the parking lot twice. They did a very excellent job. And the forum was a very good forum. It talked about what precinct delegates need to be doing and how we can get out into the community and get people registered and get out to vote and educate them on why it's important to vote. So that turned to be nice. And other than that, everyone continue to have an awesome New Year, and keep shopping Inkster.
All right.
Mayor, can you remind them they can call the city clerk's office?
Yeah, if you have nothing else to do, just call the city clerk every day. You need any information on the Black History Month, you can call her. Just real quick, also, I just want to announce the other award winners from Saturday's event at the MLK event. We had Dale Earl Fuller won the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior 2019 Lovejoy Award. So anybody who knows him, he earned that award. He's always helping. Stand up so everybody know you're on, man. He's always helping out, always, always. And we also, we have Reverend John Hearn won the Pastor of the Year Award, right?
Yep.
Yep, and he was there and attended. So it was a great event. If you missed it, it was great entertainment. We had a good time at the event. Also, we got State of Cities coming up February seventh. Put it on your calendar. Six PM, it's gonna be at the Recreation Center, reception to follow after the State of the City. So we got three, three things that we're rolling out at the State of the City. One, you saw tonight if you were here at the orientation meeting. We have two other plans and announcements for the State of the City, so make sure you're there that night. Inkster's moving and shaking, so.
And it's on your Black History calendar.
It's on the Black History calendar, so if you got one of those, you're good. You have anything else we should get? All right, I'm glad everybody came out. This weather's too cold. I think we should all move to Florida. Take the whole city and move to Florida, because I can't take this weather. Yeah, it's true, it's true, it's true. All right. Okay, Michigan is playing right now. We're probably in the second half already, so we're gonna try to get home and check that out. Oh, stop, stop.
Motion for adjournment.
Support.
Been properly moved, supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? It passes.